It is five o'clock and we are ready to get into our workshop session. Do we have any public comments at this point?
No, sir. No one has signed up.
Okay, then let's go to the information discussion, possible action on the 2021 compensation study.
Attorney Mayor and Counsel, pleased to introduce this item before we have Ms. Kim Meismer and Julie Barons. We're gonna come up and present this more fully for you. Please be able to bring the results from the compensation study that you all approved and budgeted for for this fiscal year. As Kim will go into, as you may recall, we completed an initial update of a compensation study during the 2020 timeframe. But that was, we basically hit the pause button on that as we were going through the pandemic. And then, as you've seen over the last 24 months, certainly, and you heard from the Workforce Commissioner last week, we've had an acceleration of a lot of extreme labor trends. No doubt that is the issue of our day in working through. We are a people-based business. We've got 300-plus employees that are out there providing services for our citizens. And it's essential for us to make sure we're maintaining our labor force and that our compensation scales are adequate to be able to maintain those. A big portion of it, of course, is our public safety officials, which we have had, as you know, we've had discussions before about recruitment and retention issues, which are not unique to Kerrville necessarily. We nationally have continued to have issues in policing, in modern-day policing, and folks being interested in moving into those areas and those fields. And then certainly, the pandemic has caused some extreme strain in regards to healthcare services, which are our paramedics and our firefighters out there providing health services to our citizens every day. So with that, I'll ask Ms. Kim Meismer to come up and fully delve into the details of the compensation study.
Thank you, Mr. Hoppe. Martin, can we get the presentation? Thank you very much. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I'd like to start by providing a historical look at our compensation and the challenges that we've had during the pandemic. In FY 2020, October 2019, step increases were provided to all Step Plan employees. That's public safety. And then merit increases were provided to all non-Step Plan employees. In April of 2020, temporary salary reductions were, or the leadership team members took temporary salary reductions in five, in the amount of 5% to 10% for 10 weeks. And that was due to, you know, the uncertainty of COVID-19 and what that was going to do to the tax, sales tax, and our budget and everything else. In FY 2021, October of 2020, no merit increases or Step Plan increases. And that again is due to COVID, due to the pandemic. In December 2020, sales tax was looking a little bit better. We decided, or Counsel decided to go ahead and do a one-time 2% compensation, non-recurring for all employees. And then in April of 2021, we reinstated the Step Plan increases for public safety. And we made those retro, and Counsel approved making those retroactive to October of 2020. So none of this, none of the public safety employees missed their increases. But there was no reinstatement of merit increases for general government employees. In FY 2022, October of 2021, Step Plan increases continued for public safety. And merit increases were reinstated for general government employees. The raise was 1.5% to 3%, and that depended on, you know, merit is based on your performance evaluation. And then a 2% COLA was also provided to all employees.
And just as a reminder, that that raise goes back to really a number pre-pandemic. Because we didn't adjust salaries, we just did it one time.
Right. Yes. That's correct.
And so it's important to note that.
That's, I think that's significant.
Essentially, there was a reset back to, yeah, pre-pandemic levels. That's correct.
Okay. All right, Julie?
Okay, so they leave me to talk about all the fun stuff. So as I'm sure all of you are feeling too, as of December of '21, the United States across the board, inflation rose to 7%. So anything last year that was costing $10,000 is costing us $10,700 now. And I think we're all feeling that. Highest inflation since 1982, so 40 years since we've seen this kind of inflationary shift. Social Security Administration gave a 5.9% COLA to all Social Security recipients. So that was effective this past January. And that's also the largest increase that they've seen in 40 years. So lining up with inflation was, was the idea. Our employees are definitely feeling the effects of inflation, as are, you know, everyone, citizens in general, everyone, with higher gas prices, higher grocery prices, general cost of goods, you know, rising rents due to those increased costs and just overall increase in spending from day to day. So, you know, looking back at what you just said about the COLA, if you consider the 2% COLA, plus if they received a 2% merit increase, that's 4%. And we're at 7% inflation. Actually, we're going backwards with that trend, so just something interesting.
Okay, so now I want to talk about the public safety vacancies and recruiting. In the Police Department, in 2021, our vacancies reached a high of 33% in our telecommunications specialists. That's our dispatchers. And then 28% for our patrol officers. And in the Fire Department, in 2021, our vacancies reached a high of 18% in the firefighter, paramedic position. Our public safety positions are always open. We're always recruiting them. We always have them open. And that includes police officer, telecommunications specialist, and then firefighter, paramedic. Some of our recruiting challenges are entry-level pay. Kerrville's entry-level pay is currently less than Fredericksburg and Bernie. You know, those are very close cities. And, and when, when people apply here, typically they apply at Fredericksburg or Bernie and try to see which one they can get on with. Police officer entry for Kerrville is $54,208. For Bernie is $56,330. And then for Fredericksburg is $56,000. The firefighter entry for Kerrville is $48,084. For Bernie, it's $53,648. And then for Fredericksburg, it's $55,200.
I think it's important to note, too, on this one, you know, in particular, you're seeing some differences there in the, the overall range between Police and Fire. Remember, in this last budget, we did make some adjustments to pay scale on Fire. Because we, or I'm PD, I'm sorry, because we, we knew we were behind in some of those areas. And we were facing, in particular, some recruiting issues. And so we did make some adjustments in this budget year to that. And so that's why you're not seeing as much of a difference there. We've also, there were mid-year, well, beginning of fiscal year adjustments that were made by both of those entities in October. And so the timing of the study was very important because we were able to capture basically where they ended up landing on their adjustments so that we could make an informed, clear decision.
As of today.
That's correct. As of today.
So recruiting challenges, other than entry-level pay, is of course our location, difficulty finding affordable or available housing in Kerrville. And if they're not already living in Kerrville, they have to pass by either Fredericksburg or Bernie to get here. So if they say, well, you know, I can get, I can be 30 more, 30 minutes closer to San Antonio or 30 minutes closer to Austin or something, then, you know, you can see why they, they might choose that. Recruiting challenges that we're having in non-public safety positions. We have some top vacancies that have been open for more than seven months. We've not been able to hire these people. And that's water distribution utility worker, light equipment operator, our tourism and event coordinator for, in parks. And then our pro-shop attendant also, and that's a part-time position.
Now, when we say we haven't been able to hire people, is that people applying and they just don't meet qualifications? Or we're just not getting anybody applying?
We are getting some applications, but they're not qualified.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
There've been a few of these, particularly like the tourism and event coordinator position. We've had some qualified folks that ended up taking other jobs because the pay scale was behind probably where it needs to be from a market standpoint.
Okay.
Kim, you might also want to talk to you just a little bit of, not necessarily open positions for length of time, but also a little bit of churn in some of those typical positions that we have. For instance, on, you know, parks maintenance is a frequent one that where there's.
Yes, yeah. Well, parks maintenance and then street, street operators also. And, you know, telecommunications also, those are just kind of revolving door positions. And, and sometimes it's because they're the lower-paying positions. And then people get into the city and then they'll promote, and then we have that position open again. So sometimes it's a good thing, sometimes it's a bad thing.
Gotcha.
So with the approval of Counsel, we completed a compensation study in December of 2021. And I'm gonna give you a little bit of compensation study history here. We engaged with public sector personnel consultants in 2013, and that's Matt Weatherly and Sam Hines. And Sam Hines should be on the phone to answer any questions that you have. He couldn't be here today, but he is on the phone. In 2013, we completed a formal compensation study. And then in 2015, a compensation study update to that formal one. And then in 2020, that was the one that EA was talking about, that we were, it was a comp study update that was not implemented due to, due to the pandemic. And then in 2021, this compensation study that we're talking about today. The objectives were, of our compensation study, were to improve recruiting and retention by surveying all the positions within the city, having a strategic focus on recruiting and retention of public safety employees due to significant vacancies within the Police and Fire Departments, overtime budget issues, employee burnout, and then also to recommend strategic market adjustments to the employee pay plan.
What does surveying all positions within the city mean?
We have 140 job titles, and so all, all of our job titles were surveyed.
Surveyed out, meaning comparisons?
Yes, yes. And in just, on the next slide, you'll see all of the entities that were surveyed. We surveyed Bernie, Sibyllo, Converse, Ferrox Ranch, Fredericksburg, and you can see all the rest of them. In addition, on the first go-around, we didn't get enough information on the Fire Department. So I got with Eric and, with Chief Maloney. And he said to go ahead and, and try to survey the Bear County ESDs, the Emergency Services Districts. And we surveyed two, four, and seven at, at Chief Maloney's request. All right, Mr. Hoppe?
So from a recommendation standpoint, Kim, feel free to stay at the podium and chime in here as well. We've got several recommendations that came out of the study for mid-year fiscal year adjustments. Essentially, that would be applicable at the end of March. And it would allow for adjustments to be made across the, the back half of the fiscal year, the remaining 13 pay periods after that effective date. Essentially, what we are recommending to get us into the market scope to correct both that inflationary element as well as the strategic market adjustments that we are seeing that we've fallen behind in for certain positions, is a 5% COLA for all employees. And then in that strategic market adjustment for 116 specific positions, 37 in the public safety area, and 79 within the general government sector. You know, in the end, the question is, okay, well, how much does this cost, right? We're having these inflationary issues, which are rising these costs. And we know that it is an impact to our employees that are having to pay those rising costs. But fortunately, and Julie will get up here and be able to talk about, you know, that revenue stream. We're fortunate in that Kerrville has done fairly, fairly well throughout the pandemic. And because of those really, two, two elements, I think, are, are why we're seeing the increases in our sales tax. And one is our continued strength in our regional economy. And, and being the net winner of being able to import those sales tax dollars from other adjacent counties that are coming in, they're spending our dollars here. But we are seeing those rising costs in those goods. And so we're fortunate that we have those revenues to help offset some of these costs to be able to combat the inflationary elements. Essentially, 5% COLA for all employees, public safety included. General Fund, which is where the vast majority, all of our public safety employees are funded within the General Fund. It's overall between those five different funds, General Fund, Water Fund, Garage, Golf and Development Services, is $714,000. That 5% COLA puts us in an optimal position for being able to recruit police officers regionally. So that takes care of the vast majority of what we're seeing on, on the PD side because you all made some of those strategic adjustments already during this last fiscal year. So that 5% brings, brings that up into where that needs to be. On the strategic market adjustments, there's 116 positions. Again, 37 of those were in public safety. A big chunk of those are in fire. And so that total impact is $277,000. And that really puts us into that optimal position of being competitive regionally on the fire side.
So we adjusted the Police and not the Fire?
We, we did on the very base level. It was not across the board. It was a strategic adjustment simply to the patrol officers and the sergeant ranks. Because we were seeing recruiting issues in particular in that area.
Right.
Since that time, we've had a number of vacancies that have also occurred in Fire. And as we've gone through this compensation study, we've been able to, you know, assess that we're also behind in that functional area.
So when, when we do that, then, and we would go back to the numbers that, from Bernie and Fredericksburg, that puts us basically on the same level with them.
It puts us a little bit above them.
A little bit above. Okay, good.
So that grand total of COLA and market adjustments, the, the impact for the remainder of that fiscal year, that half year is $991,000. And Julie, you want to come up and talk a little bit about budget impact?
Okay, so we're looking at how we would cover the cost of doing both of these adjustments. The proposal would be that the 5% COLA would be covered with an adjustment to sales tax revenue. With the strength of sales tax, we're looking after the first quarter at a 15% over fiscal year '21. Pretty constant trend. And so the idea would be to increase our budget by 8%. That's still fairly conservative considering what we're seeing as a trend, giving us a little bit further into the year to kind of make some decisions about if that trend is going to continue. But pretty comfortable saying that we can increase that by $725,000, just as a round number, to cover that 5% COLA. And then looking at the market adjustment for the $277,000, keep in mind, that 277 is assuming that all of our positions are filled because we did look at all positions. So with some vacancies included there, you know, that number will be a bit smaller. So the idea here would be to try to accommodate that by other revenue sources that happen within fiscal year '22. But through our mid-year budget amendment that we'll be bringing to you in February, creating a reserve fund balance account specifically designed for personnel. So say that if we didn't have the revenue sources that we needed to, to cover that market adjustment, then that we could use some of that reserve fund to pull over to do that. If we didn't need the reserve fund, then of course the reserve fund could sit there restricted for future personnel needs. Should we, you know, have some needs in the future or have some budget shortfalls that we were to see as we budget in the future that we could pull from?
Go back and explain to me market adjustment 277. What?
So the market adjustment, let me back up just a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a strategic, okay.
Correct. So that's based on the compensation study. So in addition to the 5% COLA.
Yeah.
So if you forward up one slide, Julie. So basically what we're saying is that even with an 8%, which we feel is pretty conservative for sales tax moving forward, that's gonna cover that 5% COLA amount?
Yeah.
Where we end up on sales tax, there's a good chance that it will be above that 8%. Certainly, the trend right now is at about 15%. We think that will probably cover the market adjustment. But as an added assurance, there's two conservative elements that we're estimating within that market adjustment piece. One, this assumes that every one of those positions was filled March, at the end of March. I think that's highly unlikely, but we wanted to just, you know, let's put it out there because that's the conservative thing to budget for, right? The other piece is, is we're, we're hopeful that sales tax continues to trend probably above that 8%. But just in case, our recommendation would be, let's hold a little bit of that surplus fiscal year $21 into a reserve account, and let's just see where we end up landing at the end of the year, right? There's no crystal ball on sales tax. That gives us some cushion in case we, we don't fall where we end up thinking we're gonna, gonna have. But, and if, hopefully, we'll end the year well. And if we do, then Counsel can look at reallocating those funds in, 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 in any way that you all desire.
So the market adjustment then is a backup for the sales tax revenue? And the reserve fund is the backup for the market adjustment? Is that right? Am I following that correctly?
What did you say?
I don't know about the first part of what you said.
So, so the market adjustment is kind of like a backup or helping cover for the sales tax revenue?
Sales tax.
No, so the other way around. So the hope would be that sales tax would be more than the 8% that we would increase the budget. We would be able to cover that additional, that market adjustment piece. But if we couldn't, as part of the budget adjustment, we have some funds left over from fiscal year '21 that we could put aside in a restricted account specifically used for personnel in the event that something happened and sales tax doesn't end as strong as we think. So that we're not in a hole at the end of the year. We've got a kind of a cushion as a backup plan.
If we had to use the whole 277 in fund balance, what would, what, what would that mean going forward?
I think that'll depend on the budget adjustment. So, you know, if the, we're, we're still kind of working through those pieces. But right now, we have a pretty high fund balance. But that's because, remember, we didn't do a year-end fiscal year '21 budget adjustment. We wanted to see.
We wanted to start pushing them.
Mm-hmm. And so once we do that, that's gonna bring us down closer to about 27% is what I think. So technically, we.
We need, where do we need to be? 25?
25. GFOA says 15 to 25, but kind of as an internal policy, we try to stick to a minimum of 25.
But even using that 277, we'd be within our.
I'd have to do some math on that, but we'd probably still be okay.
I don't think we will. Like you said, I just think we're, that's the highest threshold I get that. I don't think we'll be there.
Right.
But we're still protecting what we have to cover.
Definitely. And keep in mind that a reserve fund balance account is part of fund balance. So essentially, say if you had a million dollars that you were, that you had and you were gonna do as part of a budget adjustment, and 200,000 of that you put into this reserve fund balance account, that stays within the overall fund balance. So you're kind of doing two things. You're, you're kind of padding the fund balance a little bit by keeping that in there. But it's in reserve fund balance, so it's restricted specifically for personnel reasons that we could take out of.
We move it end of year if we don't need it. We put it back in.
We can put it back in. We can leave it there. I mean, it, that's really kind of Counsel's discretion about how, you know, we use that moving forward. You know, do we want to use it, you know, keep it restricted for future moving forward? Do we want to just roll it into fund balance or, you know, what, kind of what's your pleasure?
And that's not been there in the past.
No, this would be a new account that we created, and really, it's just kind of a set aside idea.
Yeah.
The, by the way, and I may raise this in the council meeting. But if we continue to receive the sales tax monthly that we're getting so far, we would end up potentially with $339,473 above what we had anticipated.
If we continue now, even with doing that, that is true. Even with doing this, and, and, you know, without that math in front of me, I won't speak to that exact number. But, you know, after the second quarter, I'll be a lot more confident in telling you where I think sales tax is gonna end up. You know, right now, it's following the same trends. And I do have a chart to show you tonight that's gonna kind of show you some trends over the last few years. It's trending exactly the same, just on a higher scale. So I think, you know, the trends month to month are the same. It's just higher, and it just depends on, you know, if we're gonna be able to consistently count on that 15% average, which, you know, has proven true the last 22 months. But, you know, sales tax is really volatile, so I don't really like to give you a, yeah, I feel great about this. But, you know, feel great about it today.
What did you, what, what, what did we budget or what, what did we decide to budget for? You don't, you have the 15% over what we're receiving so far on, over 2021. And then your amendment is proposing 8% over 2021. What did we actually budget for, for '22?
So we budgeted, we estimated where sales tax would end for '21 in June.
Okay.
And kind of watched that through July. We estimated it was gonna be 3%. Our budget would be 3% over what fiscal year '21 was. But it actually blew that out of the water. So we actually have a smaller '22 budget than we ended the year. Because remember, we have October, November, we still have to capture back.
Okay.
So, you know, we're looking at really six months in.
Okay.
So.
Would an amendment come to us next quarter then, after you feel more comfortable about the percentages?
My, we have a budget amendment scheduled in February, and there's multiple pieces of that. And actually, I'll move on to the next slide so we can talk about that a little bit. So the next action, really, for you guys would be, you know, the approval of a budget amendment that we would bring forth that would contain the things that we just talked about. And then there's some other transfers that I went ahead and included just to kind of give you a heads up. I don't have numbers on this, obviously, because that'll come later as part of the budget amendment. But just enhanced community investment projects, so CIP funding that we might. we might transfer to, asset replacement. If you think about the study that we did last year, and the needs assessment for asset replacement, so we would propose that some of that excess funds would go over to that asset replacement fund. Streets carryover, so anything because of timing that we didn't spend in fiscal year '21, rolling that back over into operations for fiscal year '22, potentially to add that back to a streets budget. The cities' matching grant portion, so we've talked about multiple grants that we have going on, so go on ahead and do a set aside for what the cities' portion would be for those matching grants, so that, you know, once they're funded, we're not then searching for where the matching parts are going to come from. And then some elements in the hot fund that we would bring in. That's kind of the general, short version of what the budget amendment will include, you know, without
And where's that coming from?
That'll come from excess funds from fiscal year '21. So just reallocating excess funds
And where are those sitting now?
Fund balance.
Fund balance. More, okay.
Yeah.
We just keep them generalized
Right.
until we go through the audit process, which we've wrapped up, and they're going to be coming to you guys in February as well. So we get those final kind of year-end numbers finally done, and we see where we ended, and then we kind of square that up, and we give council an opportunity, basically, to say, okay, here was our excess, our surplus funds. How do you want to allocate that to these other funds?
Right. And that's when we tip, okay, okay.
So the audit report will come first, and then the budget?
Actually, the first budget amendment will come first, but keeping in mind, I've already seen the audit stuff by then. It's just kind of a security blanket for us to go ahead and let the auditors finish their work, so that we can see, you know, how their numbers match our numbers, and is that true? And then watching fund balance as we bring the total general fund together with all the components, making sure that we're maintaining fund balance where we need to.
Yep. And that was, as I was going to say, for me personally, the two things that come to my mind are looking at where the fund balance lies, in case all of this did happen.
Right.
And then the other item would just be, I'm just kind of curious about percentages on personnel and how that shifts all of the percentages
Okay.
for the expenses.
For the overall expenses, because right now, in general fund, we're about 70% of our budget, keeping in mind that we totally expect other expenses to go up too.
Right.
So I think it will be relative, but that's a thought
Right, and I just wanted
from the podium right now, but we can certainly
Yeah, I'd like to see that
put some out to that.
Analysis.
Sure.
Another question. Our fire chief, our police chief are comfortable with the numbers that we're, that you're putting in place for them, that that should get us, hopefully will get us, the people we want and need?
Yeah, as the fire department, so these numbers that we're looking at are definitely going to help with our recruitment. So one thing that we've had to address, and we've been addressing for many years here, is a paramedic shortage, the shortage of, even I'll hire those. We've hired six paramedics in four years since 2018. So we've lost a lot more than six in that same amount of time. We do have a school program that sends them to school, but we have to work on the retention piece, too. So what we put back in in fall was a retention task force, and really try to work on the other components of this, the things that we may have more control in, work with the city manager, and so we did that retention task force. 13 meetings, met with every guy in the fire department, and came down to really, the ones that were here, or the ones that are here now, or have been here 20 years, is what keeps you here, what's the draw? And we really tried to build off that and come up with some recommendations of moving forward, so we can improve the retention, maybe I can reduce the recruitment for there. So two of those that we put in place, so we put in the lateral transfer program, similar to that you saw with the Kerrville Police Department. So with a three-step to try to encourage people to join us with experience. The other one we did, we did a shift change for all fire personnel. We went from the standard 24 hours on duty to 48 off, to now a 4896, which is more common. But this was a conversation with the organization that we felt that was also best for us, to make us more competitive in the market. I'm also currently, and then other ones we're going to be putting in, we're working on that in 2022, and then some you'll see coming up in the budget year for fiscal year '23. I'm also on a statewide task force that is working to identify the paramedic shortage and work on a long-term program. $21.7 million has been approved by the state legislature for that, and so it's very new. We've been meeting for about a month and try to talk through some opportunities there to help departments like us across the state to hopefully identify and recruit paramedics for our organization, so for more long-term. We saw this one coming. The pandemic impacted us. We lost people during the pandemic that got out of the fire service, went to other areas, didn't want to do this anymore, and we lost a lot to the 4896 and other departments. And so to remain competitive, and this does that, keeps us competitive in there, and we'll do ours with the organization to maintain that retention and the culture and the important parts of that.
Chief, with your percentages, I mean, you have to have a certain number of firefighters on each shift. If you don't, if you've got 18% not there, I'm assuming that you are working the others longer and harder?
Correct.
And are they getting overtime for that, or are they getting comp time? And how does, does it balance out better? I mean, sometimes it's more cost-effective to raise your wages instead of paying out all the overtime that you're paying to the ones that you don't burn out.
Absolutely.
Correct. Yeah, and in regards to that, yes, we were as high as, I believe, 10 to 12 vacancies at one point. We're currently at four vacancies is what we're looking for. So we've been able to hire the firefighter EMT basic, but the paramedic is not. So when we're short, our paramedics, firefighter paramedics are picking up that extra overtime.
Mm-hmm.
So sure, some of them work that, and they always pick up the overtime. However, sometimes you work them a lot for that with the organization
Yeah.
and that becomes the burnout component, and then that's where you see people get out of the fire service or choose to go somewhere else and do something a little different from that. So it is a challenge, but yes, it will.
And it also has the fiscal impact that you're speaking to in regards to the overtime.
Yeah, I mean
We had gotten that, had gotten a little bit out of control three, four years ago. We brought that back, you know, within a good, good, and now we're at a different situation. So we're starting to see rising overtime costs again, and so we need to
Exactly.
get that back under control.
Yeah.
Chief, you know, in terms of retention of your employees, when I see the training that you do for your employees, and the police does, and what the city does in general, which finance, water, whatever, where you don't want to lose that training for folks to leave and go somewhere else. I remember talking to Sheriff Herrholtzer, Police Chief Young, and talking about that, the struggle to get somebody that you really want and qualified and trained, but you
Hey, Sam.
somebody else poaching.
Hello?
Hi, can, were you able to hear the audio in the council meeting, in this session?
I was, and then it just cut out right now as I unmuted. Yeah, I can't hear anything right now.
We can hear you.
That is one of the challenges, and it can be one of the frustrating components there, is that we spend a lot of time training. We put them through four weeks of Recruit Academy, and then the guys take them under out there in the organization. They go, they complete taskbooks to work through that probation process, and then at the end of the six months, they get where they're at, and they end up moving on, or we give them their paramedic certification and make them extremely marketable. It is a very competitive market out there right now. City of Kerrville, we have more to offer than any, any city, period across the state. I need to work on that and continue to kind of push that with the organization. We have the, we have a great group of guys and gals in the organization that are helping us do that, and we're trying to continue to build that. So we want to hire those built on the values of the organization, built on people that want to invest and interest in our fire department here, our city in Kerrville is what we're looking for. So we're finding those people.
Do you have the number, as far as the dollar number, that it costs for you to train or put your staff through orientation for four weeks? What is the cost for that, that your department experiences?
That's a great question for theirs. I don't offhand, but it is, it's four weeks of training, not just for the individual that we just hired. We always have two of our field training officers with them during that time when they're out there. We end up buying them gear, equipment, which costs thousands of dollars, including uniforms, and at the end of that, it's the other cost. And that's probably the other cost, is what hurts more than anything. It's the soft cost. It's the dedication that the crews put into somebody to help them through paramedic school, to help them
Right.
be a better firefighter, and then when they get there, they go, okay, I'm going to go up here, I'm going to go up the road
For $2,000 more
Correct.
A year.
The, your EMT paramedics, is there a bonus for them in the job? It pays, it does pay more?
So for the hiring, so we do have a hiring bonus for the paramedics.
Okay, that was another question.
We do offer $6,000 signing bonus over two years with a commit with us.
Okay.
But once again, that's a challenge, because the market just got really competitive out there, and so we've seen private Ablon Services offering $5,000. There's an Ablon Service out of Houston that pays about $110,000 for a paramedic. So they're going to work a lot of hours, but that is what they can make in a year's time. And when it got competitive is when you found private market, hospitals were short, and it becomes very difficult, is why we really push that retention task force. So still have to remain competitive in the market, and then we'll do, when we get them here, that we're going to retain them here in the organization.
So I was doing quick math. With a 5% COLA on the fire side, that gets us just slightly above both Fredericksburg and Bernie, just right there, but maybe a little bit more.
A little bit higher.
Doesn't do that, as you were noting, on the fire side. So the 37 in public safety, is that all fireside? And that gets us up to that level of competitiveness that
Strategic market adjustments
Yeah.
that we're talking about, the vast majority of those are on that fire side.
Okay. Okay.
Because you guys essentially accomplished the strategic market adjustments for, on the PD side, through your fiscal year budget approval this summer. Does that make sense?
Yep. And I suppose with the full study, there's like a data with each position list, I mean, not that we need to see all of that, but I am kind of curious which positions are, you know, being adjusted and how and why, just out of, you know
Yeah, Kim's got about 200 pages
I don't know, I won't have one to spend with it.
It kind of goes into all the ranges, so sure. Yeah, absolutely. We're happy to dig into those with you guys if you'd like to, on all the
I just would be interested to know where the gaps are.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I think the only question I would ask is, are we at the right spot? I mean, do we, do we need to go a little bit more? Obviously, we've got some sales tax money, or do we give this a try and we look at it in another year, or?
That's my recommendation. We, because of the dynamic nature of the labor market right now, I think we need to think very seriously about looking at another compensation analysis in a shorter time period. We skipped, part of 2020, we hadn't done one since 2015. That's too long
Yeah.
in this type of labor market. And so, no doubt, there's going to be other cities and other ESDs that are going to be making changes this summer, right? And so we need to stay on top of that while we're going through this and experiencing this. Maybe at some point, it levels out and it's not as dynamic, but right now, it is, and we're just going to have to stay competitive. So to answer your question, I think these adjustments will make us competitive for the rest of this year, and then we're going to need to take another hard look next year. And certainly, that'll be part of our budget discussions for what, we're getting a sense for what other people are making moves within the region, particularly in those public safety areas. So again, no action tonight. You know, basically, these, you know, we'll take your feedback from today. That'll be built into the budget, proposed budget amendments for your February schedules, and we will proceed with that unless directed otherwise.
Let me say that I think this is a good example of the competence and commitment of the staff in regard to the degree of study that's gone into this, looking at the options, everything else, and saying, how can we compensate our people adequately? It's not extravagantly, but it's adequately, and we can keep the team together. And so I want to thank you and applaud you for all the good work.
Well, big kudos to Kim and Julie on working through this, and also working with the chiefs, and making sure that they've got a good strategy and that we can pay for it, and really going through a lot of data, as I mentioned before, and then really sleuthing through what is going on in this very dynamic market. So big kudos to that team.
Yeah, and this is a little bit, well, I know it's not quite specific to this, but it's ancillary to this. One of the things that it makes recruitment hard, not just here, I assume, but in many places, is the tight housing market. So it just kind of triggered my mind to ask again for any updates from the Ridgeland development as far as construction, and how our citizens, not investors, but citizens that want to have interests, I've had more people ask me about it, you know? Just last night, I had people ask me about it. You know, you know, my such-and-such person is interested, what do they do? I don't know. I want to know what to tell them.
Sure, absolutely, yeah. We're happy to bring some of that
Yeah, I really, really want to, I mean, it's going to happen, and, you know, for people that are having to prepare for that kind of level of housing and maybe save money or go and talk to the bank about getting pre-approved for a loan, or whatever it may be, just a time horizon and a way to access the system so that, you know, so that they have that ability to know how to start that process.
Absolutely, yeah.
But just one personal note. Chief, I have a grandson who's an EMT in Houston, fully vaccinated and everything else, but got COVID twice. He's leaving health care, Roger, to go into, and Louis, to go into journalism.
It's a more dangerous line of work.
All right. Any other matter for us?
No, sir.
We are adjourned at 5:40.
Thank you, Kim.